Good evening, everyone. We are here this evening, and first of all, let me call this meeting to order. But we are here this evening to look at one item on the agenda, which is to propose new and amended job description for administrative professional technical and education support professionals. And attorney attorney will be doing that. But before we go there, may I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
Madam Chair.
Sergeant.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Motion passes for zero. Attorney attorney, hello.
Hello. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Simon. We are here today. Item number C on the agenda. It is the proposed new and amended job descriptions for administrative professional technical and education support professionals. This is the second reading. As part of the superintendent's reorganization plan, some of the job descriptions are being amended and some are being proposed for adoption. We had our first reading on May 18th, 2021. There was the public work or the workshop that the superintendent conducted that talked about her reorganization and her vision. And then we also had a public hearing on June 8th, 2021, where citizens were able to get input on these job descriptions specifically. At the public hearing on June 8th, 2021, staff presented proposed changes to four of these job descriptions based on input that we received after that first reading. And up through June 1st, 2021, those amendments have been provided to the board and have been posted online. At this point, the superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed new and amended job descriptions for the administrative professional technical and education support professionals.
Thank you. Holly, before we move this motion, I want to be clear with everyone that we will have citizen input first and then board discussion after our citizens have had have had an opportunity to give their input. Also, I want to remind everyone that we have one thing on the agenda this evening, and that's the job descriptions, and that's how we will move this meeting. With that, you've heard the desire of attorney attorney. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I know that we accept the proposed new and amended job descriptions as proposed by the superintendent.
Is there a second? At this point, people in the booth, if you have any calls, let me know. I'll start with our citizens here in the auditorium. And our first citizen is Dr. Dave Caplan. Dr. Caplan.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair McNeely, members of the board, Dr. Simon. My name is David Caplan, and I'm a District 2 parent of a rising third grader at Parker Elementary. I'm here to speak in support of the new and amended job descriptions on tonight's agenda. I think the vision that Dr. Simon presented on June 2nd has the potential to greatly improve the impact and efficiency of district staff in their mission to support teachers, and many of the programs she proposed are dearly needed and will provide world-class opportunities for all of our students. Central to Dr. Simon's plan is an administrative restructuring that includes many of the new and revised job descriptions being discussed tonight. For those who couldn't attend the vision presentation or read the descriptions in depth, some of these new positions include a Director of Evaluation Accountability and Analytics. This person will focus 100% on accountability, how we're doing, how we're spending, and how we are improving. I think this is a huge need and an excellent change from the status quo. Also on the list is a new elementary and secondary level curriculum director. I think recognizing expertise in elementary education is smart because it means we don't have to promote staff up to middle and high school positions in order for them to advance professionally. These are just two of the new and revised positions on the list. They're critical for facilitating the beneficial and accountable use of the district's $90 million incoming ESER funds. For district staff who've worked tirelessly to keep our schools open, operating in excellent through COVID, this reorganization and addition of staff is absolutely critical. So I want to zoom out a bit now and talk about why I hope each one of you will vote yes tonight. We've got Dr. Simon's vision with the new org chart we all saw earlier this month, and these are the players she needs to be in place in order to be successful. So if you've ever been a coach like Dr. Paulson, that org chart and list of positions, that's your team roster, that's your offense, your defense, your special teams. And this agenda item is about getting the right players on the field so the district can work as a team to excel and improve and achieve the vision. If you've been a band director and conductor like Mr. Hyatt, then you're talking about your ensemble here, your woodwinds, your brass, your percussion. So Mr. Hyatt, I'd say this agenda item is about getting the right musicians on the stage so the music is in tune, in time, and played with heart so we can bring the composer's vision to life. For everyone else on the board who's had the privilege of having a staff helping them achieve their professional goals, from Dr. McNeely as a former principal to Ms. Serton as a senior accountant, you all know that as leaders, you can't do it alone. You need an excellent team, and you need the flexibility to build your team and deploy it in order to achieve your vision. So to be clear, a yes vote tonight will allow a multitude of exciting new initiatives to launch this summer and be ready for fall. A no vote puts the brakes on progress in the county to the detriment of students, teachers, and families. So for each of you up there tonight, I strongly encourage you, find the leader within yourself and vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Caplan. Citizen number two, Bill Welton.
Thank you. Noticing that the majority of people on the dance are unmasked.
You might want to take your mask off. We need to hear you.
Well, I usually have a very loud voice. I am here to say that this item that is up for second reading is integrally connected with the campaign to remove a board member so that it becomes a 2-2 vote. And I'm pretty certain 2-2 votes are failures. This campaign began when this, just about the time this passed the first time. I was here that night up in the booth. And the campaign is typical of what's going on around the country with reactionary attacks on
Madam Chair.
people who represent the, who represent the, represent their people.
Mr. Welton, the attorney is motioning me for you to be able to speak for three minutes on job description, but we cannot get into the campaign. I do apologize.
Okay, well, and that's a big part of the problem is, it is, there is an integral connection between a campaign that suddenly sprung up. It isn't like they didn't know she had put the wrong address down for a long time. Nobody said anything until this passed, 3 to 2. And that, I think, says it all about where this county really is and has been for far too long in the way we treat a sizable portion of our children, their families. And I believe that, you know, you can ignore it and you can send me away. But the fact of the matter is that this, this is an integral part of what's going on. And if you don't want to deal with it, then you're basically saying, you know, you don't care about democratic rights for people.
No, sir.
And with that.
And, and I don't normally respond to any citizen, but I did state that at the beginning. And now that you have opened it up, I'm going to have to let any other speaker move there.
And as we should. As I said, I believe the case is, it's clear that it, that this campaign is connected to the reorganization plan and the redistricting possibilities or rezoning possibilities that I under, I know are connected to it. And I think that the campaign is designed to make sure that this fails, but it fails in a way that gee whiz, we can't blame anybody. It was a 2 to 2 vote. Thank you.
Carolyn Weber.
Hello, board members, Dr. Simon. Good evening again, I think for the fourth week in a row. I'm back, and my name is Carolyn Weber. I am the parent of two school-age children in the district. We are actually in District 4. I am here today to speak in favor of adopting the job descriptions proposed by Superintendent Simon. I believe that we need to move forward toward the superintendent's vision. The vision that includes using the ESER money to improve the lives of all of our Alachua County Public Schools children. Tonight's vote is, is a very important vote in showing us how this board will operate moving forward. You all can choose to exert your power over less privileged people for the sake of pride, or you can choose to positively change the lives of those children who have been left behind in this district. There are many people in this community who think that things are moving too fast. They're thinking that, they feel like they are being left behind. But what I, while I understand that it's hard when you feel that you aren't being listened to or that the superintendent isn't paying as much attention to you as previous superintendents have, what I want to suggest to those people who have been in a place of privilege for many, many years is that you push that feeling down and try to think about those who have been feeling that way for years instead of a few months. There are times in our lives when we have to put others who have been ignored first, and now is one of those times. So please think about those people and do the right thing with this vote. I also wanted to speak, I spoke with Mary Vincent today, and she had a message. She works in transportation. She asked me, she couldn't come today, but she asked me to speak on her behalf. She asked me to tell the board to do what's right for the folks in this district and in transportation. These are the people that are taken for granted. The district support staff are the ones who, who will feel this type of chaos from the governor's order. These are the people who need support from this board. And I want to end with this. Please put your past differences behind you. There are people who want the public school system to fail so that only privileged, the privileged will be able to succeed in life. You all care about our students, I know you do. Each and every one of you care about our students. I know you care about our teachers and staff as well. And today you have to do the right thing, and you need to vote for change. Vote for the vision and the job descriptions, please. And move forward with the equitable school district. Thank you.
Hello, board. Dr. Simon. Is that okay? My name is Cassandra Tucci, and I'm also here to support superintendent's vision and request that we vote to get these going. I think the best opportunity for the use of the ESER funds that we've been granted to use to the greatest effectiveness is with Dr. Simon's plan, which includes these new and revised job descriptions. It's the right way to go in implementing a new vision to move our schools and district to the next level for all of our students. We have effective and courageous leadership to get the job done, and these job descriptions are necessary to carry out the vision that is set out. I believe that this vision, along with our ongoing facility improvements, will create a new environment of equity and excellence for our students. And I request that you support these descriptions as I do. Dr. Paulson, Mr. Hyatt, we're really counting on you to vote for progress and equity.
We are not allowed to call names tonight.
Sorry.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. I'm done. Appreciate it.
Oh, that's a, we'll come back. Is Ransom Thomas in here? Okay, and the next person, Mrs. Johnson.
My name's Max, and I'm a member of Socialist Alternative Gainesville and the Alachua County Labor Coalition. I support the proposed new and amended job descriptions. This proposal is also supported by Dionne McGraw, who is under attack by a right-wing campaign backed up by Governor DeSantis.
Mr. Nolan, you were not in here when I made the announcement that we can only talk tonight on this agenda about job descriptions.
And I support those job descriptions, and so does Dionne McGraw. And it's relevant to tonight because she voted, it passed 3 to 2 before with her support. And tonight, I suspect, is going to die at 2-2. She should be voting tonight. This should not be voting without her tonight. This is a much-needed amendment. And it provides much-needed staff.
What I would tell you, excuse me, sir. What I would tell you, Madam Chair, is that we're here at your direction. We're talking about the job descriptions, and that's the pending issue before the board.
It's no coincidence that this is happening.
Excuse me, sir. And so my advice would be to direct all the public comment to the merits of the job description planned in the reorganization before the board.
This amendment has merit because it's supported by Dionne McGraw, who was elected by the people of Gainesville and who is now being recalled against the will of the democratic rights of the people of Gainesville.
Mr. Nolan, could you refer back though? I understand what you're, have said thus far. But would you go back to the job description that's on the agenda for tonight?
So the, the job description is part of an effort proposed by this historic black majority on the school board to begin the process of integration that never fully happened in Gainesville. I went to these schools as a child, and I can say that it is not integrated. And it's no coincidence that this is all happening in response to this because the right wing does not want to integrate schools. They never wanted to. And this is following the largest protest movement in U.S. history, the Black Lives Matter movement last summer, in which the historic black majority on the school board was elected. So we need to defend these gains of the Black Lives Matter movement, pass this proposal, and Governor DeSantis must reinstate Dionne McGraw.
We have Eli Barrett, and after Eli, Mr. Barrett, we will have Ransom Thomas.
Am I good to go?
You are good to go.
Thank you. My name's Eli Barrett. I'm a graduate of Eastside High School, class of 2014. It's been, been longer than I thought. Like a lot of the speakers, I attended Alachua County schools for my entire childhood. And as a white man who attended these schools, I saw how deeply inequitable they are. Anyone who denies that is either a liar or deliberately misleading themselves. And, you know, I do support the changes in job descriptions. But again, like prior speakers have said, we cannot disconnect the vote on these job descriptions from the undemocratic attack on the will of the voters of Alachua County.
Madam Chair, if, I think what we're here to talk about at the direction that you've laid out is this is a discussion of the merits of the reorganization plan. And if there's comments from the public about the merits of the plan, the pros and cons of it, and not what's going on outside of the plan or political issues or any of that, that's what we need to focus on.
Thank you. May I, may I speak again? May I speak without disruption from the board attorney? Thank you. Yeah, and again, I, I think, as many people have pointed out, we cannot separate the current issue of the job descriptions and the overall role it plays in making Alachua County schools equitable from the effort from the far right and from many white liberals in town to remove Dionne McGraw undemocratically.
We cannot call the person's name. And I, I, I am sorry. If I allow you and every other citizen to do that, we'll probably be here until 2:00 a.m. because everyone right now is caught with comments. I have comments, you have comments. But we are here specifically for job descriptions tonight. Please, sir.
Okay. Well, I will say, there is no reason that anyone should vote against the job descriptions. It was already approved by a vote. I'm trying to word this in a way where I can, I can, hmm. Why is it that we're voting on this again even though it was already decided by a Democratic majority of people who were elected democratically by the voters of Alachua County?
We vote, we, and I will respond to that. We're voting on it again tonight because we have the public hearing and then the first reading, and this is the second reading.
Okay. Normally, isn't it a five? Normally, isn't it a five-person Board, so that we can have majority votes?
Beg your pardon?
Would you let me address that?
Go ahead.
There's a rulemaking process that the Board has to follow when it puts forth new policies. And that's laid out in Florida statute. And the process that we're going through tonight is just the same process that's been happening for years, where we have multiple opportunities for public comment along the way. So new policies don't just get dropped like this, we have thoughtful discussion about them at multiple meetings. And this would be the last meeting in that process, should the Board go forward with the approval. So that's why we've had more than one.
If there is a two-two vote, how is that decided?
Okay. Madam Chair, do you want to respond?
It's your choice, your day to turn.
Okay. A majority of the Board members present is required to pass any motion. So if we have four Board members, we would need three, a majority, to pass a motion tonight.
And what if the vote is two-two? It won't pass?
Anything less than a majority of three, the vote would fail.
Okay. Again, it seems an error to have only four Board members and not make it easier to break a tie vote. Again, we all know why this is happening. We all know why we're in the spot we're in, and we all know why people are coming to public comment to voice these concerns. It is a racist attack against a democratically-elected representative. Thank you. And I have appreciated learning so much about the state statute.
Hi, thank you. My name is Ransom Thomas. I'm a nursing instructor at Santa Fe College and a member of Socialist Alternative, it's also the Labor Coalition. And I just wanted to say I support the proposals that are being put forward, and that it sounds like, based on what was just mentioned by yourself and yourself, that if this vote goes two to two, then it will fail, which I think is extremely unfortunate. And I also think it's really unfortunate that it appears that that is the way that it might unfold. And I really just want to say that if, in fact, the vote does fail two to two to advance with these proposals, that it's really a rejection of the democratic decision-making of the community here in Gainesville due to the way that they have voted in previous elections to set up, you know, a school board that they felt reflected their desires for how the schools in this county should be run. And so I just, you know, I would hope that the Commissioners would consider that, that the vote against this is really, it's really just a way of disenfranchising the democratic choices that the people of this county made. And whatever other reasons, I know that, you know, there's a lot that's been said that we cannot discuss, but it would really be an example of a, you know, Governor who has interfered directly in our local decision-making and actually overruled the votes of, you know, our county citizens. So thank you very much, and I appreciate having the opportunity to speak. Thank you all.
The next citizen will be Wendy Wood, and then Dr. Rockwell.
Hello, good evening. I've already sent an email in, but I wanted to read an email for you from Amy Schorzer. She was unable to send this in time by the noon deadline and unable to attend tonight. So I'm just gonna read you her email for her input. To the Alachua County School Board, I urge you to support the proposal for the new positions being put forward tonight. We are receiving an enormous amount of federal monies, and we need to make sure that we are spending those funds wisely. I believe the positions being proposed by the Superintendent ensure that we will do so. We have an opportunity to lift up the most vulnerable and underserved of our students. Despite whatever upheaval has happened on the Board, the voters made it clear that this community supports actions and policies that attend to all students, especially those who are currently being left behind. I support the Superintendent and her strategy. Sincerely, Amy Schorzer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Dr. Rockwell.
Good evening, Superintendent Simon, Madam Chair, Board Members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Dr. Sarah Rockwell. Tonight, you will be casting your final votes to determine whether the new job descriptions proposed by Dr. Simon will be approved. These job descriptions are the first step in the vision Dr. Simon presented on June 2nd. In my opinion, Dr. Simon's plan and the job descriptions are extremely well-thought-out. I especially appreciate her including a Director of School and Community Relations, focusing on data analysis, and separating the e-school and homeschool offices. I think these proposed changes, and many others, are necessary and will make our district operate more effectively and efficiently. I imagine that putting together this plan and these job descriptions took Dr. Simon and her staff a great deal of time, effort, energy, and thought. And I would hate to see that go to waste if this should stall on a two-two vote. This evening's vote is especially critical, given the unprecedented opportunity we have to improve our school district with the $90 million in Esser funds. We need to plan for and then responsibly spend those funds on a rather tight timeline. I worry that a delay in plans will be extremely problematic moving forward. As you are all aware, we have been experiencing over two decades of attempts from both the federal and state governments to privatize, defund, and delegitimize our public schools. We have a chance with this Esser money to do what we thought was impossible before. We can protect our public schools. We can make sure that our district shines like a beacon of hope, providing an excellent and equitable public education to every single student. I almost didn't attend the Board meeting this evening. This morning, I woke up to numerous messages from friends letting me know that someone was threatening me on Facebook. When I got on Facebook, I found over thirty messages. To summarize their content, these were efforts to prevent me and other advocates from attending this evening. Some of the threats were even directed at all of you, the Board members and Superintendents. I started my morning on the phone with an ASO deputy and met with her. And despite these threats, I still came to this meeting because I think it's imperative that we close the opportunity gap in our school district. I think it's imperative that each child has a quality education regardless of race, disability, or where in our county they reside. And I think passing these job descriptions is that first step. I'm willing to risk my own safety to support the goal of a quality education for all children. I believe that these new job descriptions are a first step toward reaching that goal. I hope you'll stand up for progress and educational excellence by voting in favor of the job descriptions. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Rockwell. Andrew Welton and Carmen Ward will be after that individual.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dr. Andrew Welton. I teach at the University of Florida, and I'm glad to be here tonight. I want to speak enthusiastically in support of these new job descriptions. As we all know, we have a lot of problems here in Alachua County in the outcomes of our schools, of our educations. We have a racial gap between black students. I see that in my classroom, where my classroom doesn't have the diversity of our schools here in Gainesville. And we know that these problems exist, we know the outcomes we're achieving, and we know how to start working toward a solution. These job descriptions, starting to restructure our district to overcome these problems, they're a crucial first step. I know they're a step that not only I and the other people who've spoken tonight, but a lot of our neighbors support. That's why thirty thousand of us voted to have a school board that would finally make these changes. As a few other people have said, I think it's no accident that a school board has suddenly been changed, the people in Tallahassee are stepping in after they saw that we are making these changes that I and my neighbors want to see in our county. So I hope that those of you who are here remember that we're watching the voters here. We know what we want for the county. We're going to keep demanding this regardless of who is put on the school board in the next couple of weeks, whatever happens. Please, listen to us. Adopt these new descriptions, continue making these changes, and help us achieve equity and outcome for all of our children here in Alachua County. Thank you very much, and I hope you have a good evening.
Thank you.
I'm Carmen Ward, I'm President of ACA. Thank you, Madam Chair, and Superintendent, and Board Members. I would like to say that I am here on behalf of some of my members. And some of my members feared retribution if they stood up here today and said anything. And so I just wanted to clarify that I told them they did not have to fear to be in front of the Board. And that is not how, you know, a lot of, a lot of people are afraid to speak out. And the members I want to represent are in these job descriptions. So there are, you're gonna know who they are. No, electronic tech positions. I'm wondering if that can be pulled from the list of job descriptions, because I'm not a tradesperson, and I did, I was aware of the plan. However, we did not have a Labor Management meeting regarding the change to the electronic tech position, and they are now being required to get a CDL license. They're staying at the same, some of them are staying at the same pay grade, some of them are going up. And the position has become extremely diversified. So where it was very specific before with locksmiths and people that were in charge of alarms, there was, they're all being incorporated into electronic techs. And it's such a cross-training and a despecialization, for lack of a better word, for, for positions that are highly specialized, highly technical, and constantly changing. And so I was just wondering if that was a possibility, and I know you can't respond, it's only public.
Dr. Simon will respond.
So I'm absolutely unaware of a requirement for a CDL license for electronic tech. If that is something that's being discussed, I'd say that doesn't align with my understanding of where I was planning on going with this job description. And, I mean, I can review it, I don't think it's in the job description either that they're required to get a CDL, so I think that's perhaps misinformation. As far as the other components, and I think this goes back into our discussions that we have about efficiency, locksmith is an excellent example. We do still have locks in our buildings, but actually, we are on a trajectory, and this was long before I became Superintendent, that all of our locks are digitized with a FOB system. So it's, I would say it's in the area where we have had fields of the past, that as the evolution of the field in this situation, specifically a FOB lock system, that there is a need to modify the skill sets to address the current needs. So if all of our doors now require an electric technician in order to address the changing of the locking system, we do need our locksmiths to expand. And one of the components specifically associated with cross-training, it's an efficient model to make sure that the individuals who work for this district have the ability to do other like and related jobs, like, for example, this component with the locksmith. As far as the cameras and the techs, this, again, is an efficiency component where we have, right now, we have two different camera systems, the camera system that runs on the buses, and the camera systems that are throughout our entire district. Again, with efficiency, to have the one camera system where all individuals who are focused on cameras have the same networking and programming that they're working with, I see this as an efficiency component. And I strongly feel that many of the issues that we've talked about, even in our budget workshop that we had earlier, efficiency is very much important. And so what we looked at and what we were really examining was not only, one, making sure that we have the ability for people to be able to relate to what is currently going on and what we are anticipating is the future of the district, but we also have built-in abilities for individuals to progress throughout the system, so they have an entry-level job that can take them throughout their career to retire. So I, we did talk with you about this, and we did, and one of the components was, I think, we were hearing quite a bit of feedback that people had an entry-level position and didn't have room to grow, and we built that into these job descriptions. So that's just my feedback on what I'm saying.
Thank you. And I look forward to having Labor Management meetings about how we do that with professional development.
Thank you. Tracy Amberbrede, and after that person, we'll have Sharon Burney.
Good evening, Dr. McNeely, Dr. Simon, Dr. Paulson, Mr. Hyatt. Thank you for giving me the time. Ms. Certain, I'm sorry. My name is Tracy Amberbrede. I am a teacher at Pace, but I'm also a parent of a child who's a rising eighth grader at Fort Clark. My oldest graduated through our system and my middle home schools. But, in any case, I wanted to call, or I usually call, I wanted to come in and express my support for these jobs. And I have, I have a question about procedure, if you can answer it, because it applied to earlier. When you asked for a motion to approve, and you got it, and you asked for a second and you didn't, and I don't know how the rules work. So I'm curious, are you, Dr. McNeely, able to offer the second, or is Dr. Simon, who I realize isn't actually a Board Member, like, how does that work? I don't know if you can answer me or not, but I was curious because I don't know.
Neither, neither. I heard nothing, and so I am a Board Member, and I second it.
Okay, I didn't hear you say that. Thank you for the clarification. I just was confused. Okay, so, we have a Superintendent with courage and knowledge to create and develop job descriptions and restructure this district in a strategic manner that is long overdue. It is not a coincidence that the past half-decade has produced no change in the opportunity gap for blacks, for black students in this district. Now that the vision and plan are in place, the job description should be approved so the plan can move the next step further in implementation. Leaders are needed to guide the implementation carefully and wisely. I support these job descriptions and ask that you do the same with your vote. And I would like to add, I know that a lot of this change is happening really quickly. And that's really discomforting to a lot of people. And I would say that we learn the most, we gain the most through our discomfort. Change does not come easily. It does not come kindly. It leaves tears, it leaves broken hearts, and in this case, I hope it raises our students up because they need it. I see kids every day who have gotten lost, and I know you all do too. I see kids who want things to be better and to be different, and their families are on board with that, and they want the opportunity to excel as the rest of their peers in this county do. It is very unusual, oh, that might not be true. It's very interesting that our white students excel at a higher level than many, most of the white students in Florida, and that our black students have a disparity rate that is significantly lower than other black students in Florida. I'm hoping that we can pass these and move forward so that all of our children can start a better climb to their future. Thank you.
Thank you. Sharon Burney, and after Ms. Burney, we will hear from Charmaine Jackson.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to come and speak. I'm here to speak in hopeful, even though, you know, not optimistic that it's gonna walk out, I'm gonna walk out here any happier than I walked in here. I am up here to speak and hope that the Board does the right thing and votes in support of these job of these job positions and proposals. I have two daughters that matriculated through this school board. They are now thirty-four and thirty-seven. And they're black, and I'm black, and it's the disenfranchisement that exists in this county has not changed since they were here, which is ridiculous and pathetic. When I talk about diversity, equity, inclusion and accessibility, it shows up in all of the numbers, all of the numbers. It shows up in the resources, it shows up in not just graduation, but retention and promotion and tenure and salaries and the money that we spend in equitable inclusion across all zones. It shows up in the resist, districting zones. It shows up in every single aspect, and if it's not in the numbers and if it's not in the policy, it is not diversity, equity and inclusion and accessibility. It's not liberal thinking, it's not inclusion, it's not access for all, it's just semantics. It also shows up in election numbers. So I'm here to see if the right thing is gonna happen, and if not, then it'll show up in the numbers. Thank you.
Ms. Jackson?
As we all know, I'm Shanae Jackson. So I came tonight to this special meeting because I felt like discussion job descriptions in the midst of this climate was very ironic. Of the fact that we actually have to stand here and ask for you all to vote for basic common sense is absolutely ridiculous. It speaks to so many things and so many issues, but I just wanted to highlight that the reason that this is actually up in the arms is the same reason that we needed to change and reorganize and restructure in the first place. It's the reason that we had to change our majority. It's the reason that everybody is in their feelings about changes that are actually being made. What's ironic about this reorganization, there actually was a great amount of work done by a group of us even before Superintendent Poston even came across it. It is from the best practices all over across the country. It is from theory, it is from some of the best of the best. And the fact that we have to sit in with a room full of people and actually explain to people how to do the best of the best, I can't make it make sense. We always wanna talk about data, we wanna weaponize it against black people. We always wanna talk about data, we wanna monetize it. Because it's interesting that you always wanna talk about how our kids can't read, we wanna talk about how our staff members and things are not paid, we wanna actually blame parents, even though the statute states that every child is entitled to a high-quality education. And as soon as we start to make the decision to do what needs to be done, people who have been quiet for the last five years, that I've been one of the people to advocate for here, came out of the woodworks like roaches. I don't like it, it's not okay. I'm sick of the media trying to perpetuate it the manner in which they want to. I'm sick of some of you Board members. You know, I've sat in here many times being bullied by them. What's been interesting is to actually see three black women become Board members as well and be treated equally as I have, as you sit in here and always wanna tell us about civility. Well, let me tell you about civility. I don't care about civility, unity or anything else, as long as we have the actual disparities that we have in this particular county. From this point forward, as you already know, we're gonna call a spade a spade. From this point forward, we're gonna do what we need to do. So as it pertains to everybody in this room, I don't care if they're Republican, Democrat or what have you. If you're not interested in doing the right thing, you will be called out, called to the carpet, and if you vet me, I don't care how you feel about it. So I wanna be very clear, as it pertains to two, and they know who they are very well, the manner in which you treat your coworkers and the sense of entitlement that you all have, it's time out for that, it's enough of that. For the people in this room that feel entitled to yell, scream and be ignorant, you don't have the right to do that when kids in this county are suffering. And no, it is not the fault of the parents, it is the fault of the system. And I wanna speak specifically to Moms of Liberty, which is nothing but another way to say Daughters of the Confederacy.
Get a sentence on. Gentlemen in the booth. Caller, you are live with the Board, and I would ask that you speak on job description only.
Okay, my name is Tina Davis. I'm calling on behalf of the Board of the Job Description. I believe everything that Dr. Simon has put forth, I am total support of it. I called last time saying how I was looking forward to this upcoming school year like never before because based on the plan that I saw Dr. Simon presenting. But now, I'm going a hundred percent back to where I was before. I'm not looking forward to this upcoming school year because if this does not get passed, there will be no changes that are gonna be done specifically for the kids. And two of my kids, all those kids on the east side. I have a stake in this, that's why it's personal for me. That's why I keep calling, because my kids will either be helped or will be hindered based on the vote today. So, and also, I take offense to parents getting blamed for the lack of not learning. I'm a parent that if anyone that would look at my situation would think their kid's not doing well. I am a single parent, but that's because my husband passed, I have two African-American girls, and, but, and stay on the east side and go to school that is looked down on and fit to be Bishop. But I'm calling because I'm the parent that, that makes sure that my kids are learning both. One of them is going to upcoming eighth grade in a matinee program, and I got another one coming to sixth grade in a matinee program. So don't label all parents on the east side the same because they're not the same. And I'm also speaking on all the other kids that the parents are not calling to the school Board. We need this to vote, to be passed, I'm sorry. Thank you very much.
Caller, you are live with the Board. You have three minutes in which to give us input, and I would ask that you would stick to job description.
Yes, Dana, is it my turn?
Yes, it is.
Hi, this is Lisa Green. There was a mom that spoke last week, and she prompted me to call in. She's a mother of mixed children. So am I. I'm white, my husband is black, my children are mixed. We both went through the Elatrick County School System, my husband and I met at Eastside High School, and we got married. We used to live on the east side. I've heard people talk about racism, bullying and threatening. You don't know our story. Talked to the parents of mixed children who lived on the east side. Because my husband and I work hard, when we get home at night, our son is a priority. We did his homework when he was young, we read with him, we went to the public library, we checked out books, we did everything that we could to the point of exhaustion of parents to put our son on a great learning foundation. He goes to school, he is respectful to his teachers. We scraped, we saved, we don't buy new clothes, we're not fancy, so that we could move from the east side to put our son in better schools. Not because schools on the east side do not have the ability to be good, they do. It is the mentality of some people, and we've experienced so much racism in our families, and contrary to what y'all believe, it's not just on the white side. We have been told, you're trying to be white, who do you think you are? By us trying to make sure our son is well-mannered and educated. He was picked on at schools in the, on the east side. Bulled all the time at school on the east side because he's mixed, because I'm white and his father is black. So when it comes to these job descriptions and we talk about needing money to get equity on the schools-
Caller.
I am a parent, I will tell you, a lot of it is at home. We saw it, we lived it, we moved away from it for a reason. And what I am scared about this power grab is that we have worked hard to get out of that, to do better for our family, to do better for our son. And if you're going to come in and rezone, we're putting all of our money to our home and our taxes.
Caller.
And you think you're gonna take our son out of his school and send him back over there? No, because the next time our son gets bullied, I'm coming to y'all.
Caller, you're live with the Board, you have three minutes, and I ask of you to speak on the job descriptions for tonight.
Yes, thank you. Thanks for giving me the chance. I'm an alumni of Prairie View Elementary School, alumni of Lincoln Middle School, an alumni of Eastside High School, and I have two children in the school board system right now. And I have two main comments. In regards to the job descriptions, I think the words equity and inclusion should be struck from any description. Those are racist terms. I was, I was taught in our school board system off of what Martin Luther King taught us, which is, don't base people off the race or the color of their skin, but the content of their character. If you want to put descriptions in there, maybe put people of high character, instead of putting the current vernacular racist terms like equity and inclusion. I would ask those to be struck from any job description. Number two, I would like to ask the Board's legal representative to explain why Carly Simon is still sitting in her seat as Superintendent.
Excuse me, excuse me.
We can debate whether or not Ms.-
Thank you. Next caller. Caller, you're live with the Board, you have three minutes in which to speak, and I will just engage you if you don't speak on job descriptions.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, hi, my name is Melissa Borkowski. I have four children in the school district, and I was just calling in support of the job descriptions. I think that they are excellent, they are worded very well. I know it took a lot of time and effort to come up with them, and I just wanted to make sure that I voiced my opinion and that I was in support of these job descriptions. Thank you so much.
All right, thank you so much, gentlemen in the booth. We have two more speakers here. If there are other citizens who would like to have something to say, I hope that you've given your form to Mrs. Johnson. Otherwise, I will only take these two speakers now. Anyone else? Seeing none, Mr. Gomez. And after Mr. Gomez, Pastor Smith.
Thank you.
I think so. The mics?
Okay, Madam Chair, I wanna speak specifically directly to the job description, but I wanna speak directly to our Superintendent. So I'll speak to you to get to the Superintendent. The question that I have a lot about the position, the Superintendent, like predecessors, should have a team in place that is gonna help them get the mission done, that their, you know, the objectives that they're gonna have to fulfill. And so, it is imperative with these job descriptions that, just like anybody else, they have a team that they wanna build. My question, Madam Chair, is, with a lot of these positions, and we've seen countless times, is whether we have an equity plan when it comes to certain positions of diversity or whatever, what have you, how are we gonna have somebody in some of these positions to oversee a curriculum when we have had questions, Madam Chair, about what, who we report to make sure these things get done with respect to having equity? Because equity and quality are not the same thing. They're very different by definition, by design. So for me, I have asked it numerous times with you all, and never got a response, it falls on crickets. Say, hey, you have a question about diversity and equity? Crickets. You talk super technical, crickets. So here's the question, well, when it, and it's not necessarily a curriculum question, but it is job-related to some of the positions that you've been asked. So, any of these positions who are gonna be in curriculum or the Superintendent's team, gonna make sure that we are gonna be following state statutes? Because we, as teachers, have to teach certain things by curriculum and state statutes, correct? But it seems like we have to teach, when it comes to the Holocaust or whatever's gonna be happening, we'd have to teach those. Will any of these new positions make sure that we are inclusive of all people, to include people that look like you and yourself? And that would be a question from me, Dr. McNeely, for the Superintendent. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, hold up. Caller, you're live with the Board, you have three minutes in which to give us input, and it needs to be on job, the job descriptions. I couldn't hear you. Caller, you are live with the Board. You have three minutes to give us input about the job description. Okay, thank you. Pastor Smith.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Superintendent, Board members. Thank for the opportunity to speak in support of the job descriptions and to challenge the Elatrick County School Board. It's time to shine. Change leadership is needed.
Will you speak in, I don't know if that mic is live, touch it. It sounds like it, okay.
Change leadership is needed, and it takes courage because more of the same will get us more of the same. And so, when we have change leadership, the industry teaches us that we have what we call early adapters, people who are ready for the change, and kickers and screamers, people who want to fight the change. I challenge us to stay focused on our mission, which is that we are committed to the success of every student in Elatrick County. And we must understand that we have to be concerned about the morale throughout, from parents to students, to teachers, to administrators, even to school board members. And it is time to shine and make certain that the main thing is the main thing. Our main goal is to provide the best quality education we can for all the students in Elatrick County, and to be known as a premier school district that put people above the politics. I challenge us that it's time to shine so that we will support these new job descriptions because we're five weeks away from opening a new school this year. We can't delay. Delay means we're stuck, and stuck means we fail. And failure is a lose-lose outcome. I urge us to look for a win-win outcome, vote in the best interest of our students and the school system, support these job descriptions, support the change and be a part of a brighter future for all of the students. and be a part of a brighter future for all of the students of Elatrick County. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Smith. Dr. Simon.
Thank you. I just want one moment to speak to Carmen Ward. Uh, we got some additional clarity on the, the CDL license component. Those were actually requirements in the past job descriptions and so we didn't add it, but it is part of the job. And I have all of that here if you'd like to review it.
Thank you, Dr. Simon. At this point, we will, uh, we've heard from our citizens. We've heard you well tonight, um, and I'm hoping that at our next board meeting, you will still give us input. We value what you have to say, whichever side you sit. We value that. And at this point, I see no lights. So, and we are only speaking from lights tonight. So if there, there are no lights on, I'm going to call. Oh, there's a light. There's another light. Mr. Hyatt.
Uh, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I'd like to echo the chair's, uh, uh, appreciation of, of everybody who came out and spoke toward this issue, very, very important. Um, you know, we've had, uh, probably the last two or three years a constant rumble of negative, uh, you know, doesn't, anything the school district does well. It's not really supposed to talk about that, but, uh, you know, we have blemishes. We have a big blemish that we need to, need to address. I, I want to talk a little bit, and I hope the key words are a little bit, uh, on, about the board and what we've done. I think there's a gap in what we talk about and what we get done. Am I okay?
Not, not really. We are on job description.
Uh, Mr. Delaney, uh, do you let me know?
I just told you, as chair, I got the movement from the attorney.
Okay, then we'll, we'll cut right to the chase then.
Yes, thank you.
Let me leave all that other thing and, and I want to talk a little bit about equity. And because I'm, uh, again, and this pertains to a job description and, and I can cut further if we need to do that, if we're not allowed to talk. But, um, in, on September 18th, 2018, two boards ago, we passed a district's first equity plan. That was passed four to one. I voted in favor. You'll have to ask anybody else how they voted. This year, starting in December, our equity director was moved to another building and, and subsequently demoted.
No, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Let's cut to the chase a little more.
Well, you know, okay, in that case, uh, Dr. Simon has said that we're going to press pause on rezoning after weeks and weeks and weeks and months of talking about it. So I would, I'm going to ask that we press pause on the job descriptions, on everything except for equity. So I have a, Madam Chair, I have a substitute motion and we can call this an amendment or we can call it a, um...
You can call it an amendment.
An amendment. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, I move that the board approves the position as described in pages seventy-three through seventy-six. Chief Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement. And that is to substitute for the motion currently under court.
You have the amendment. Is there a second?
I have a second, but I need to get some clarification.
Either, do you have a second?
I said I got a second, but I need to get clarification.
What is the clarification that you need?
I'm, I thought you were going to have equity. Was it the equity thing or? Mr. Hyatt?
No, what I'm asking is that the board approve. Uh, I wasn't allowed to give a background, uh, and that certainly is that, I, you know, the discretion I would guess of the chair. Uh, so, uh, what I'm getting to is that I'm not willing, even though, uh, we're obviously as a board, uh, willing to press pause. I didn't know about this until a week ago, uh, that we're going to press pause on rezoning. Uh, I'm not willing to press pause on equity. And so my, uh, amendment is that the board approve, uh, the position described in pages seventy-three through seventy-six. Chief Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement.
Before we say anymore, Dr. Simon.
When I shared my vision statement or presentation, I did think that we have to go through the process and we do need to have a strategic plan revisiting another public comment because we haven't had the public engagement since 2012. And I think that's important. And there was a discussion that we should engage the public and then start talking about rezoning because I think we do need to take some time to engage the public. Now, I am the superintendent and so actually the board would determine whether you are pausing on zoning or not. That is not my decision. I handle the operations of the organization. You all handle the policy. So you are welcome to continue to move forward on the rezoning, but that is, uh, the board's decision and not mine.
Madam Chair, if I could respond, if I'm allowed. The, um, I'm quoting, uh, what, what was reported in the Gainesville Sun.
Oh, no.
Uh, and, and also if any, any of you, if any of you were at the meeting a week ago or the workshop, I, I was never told in advance, and I agree it's a board decision, but I was, suddenly it was, um, uh, that we're, we're going to, uh, not, we're going to take rezoning off the table. We're going to press pause. Now, I would ask the superintendent, uh, is that not your phrase? Or you, were you quoted incorrectly by saying, "We're going to press pause on rezoning"? Something, something that we committed to and talked and talked and talked and talked about, then, oops, now we're not going to do it.
So if the question is, if I have been misquoted before from the Gainesville Sun, I would have to answer yes, I've been misquoted before. Um, the presentation, I proposed a, a suggestion from my observations and all it is is a proposal, just like I propose every single board meeting that we ever vote on something. I am giving a recommendation and it is up to the board. And that's how it's been. But I will point out, on the past discussion about the rezoning, that was at a workshop as well, and it was also something that was never formally voted by the board. And again, I handle operations and these job descriptions are a part of operations. And it does feel very much so as though impeding my operations is what is occurring by not allowing me to have job descriptions. My staff has worked very hard. We do believe this is an important plan. And I have not heard a complaint about the job descriptions.
Can I respond?
Well, yes, I'm going to let you respond, but it's certainly showing that we as a board must have a retreat next week.
No.
Yes, we are going to have a retreat whether you come or not because this has got to stop. This vicarage has got to stop.
Why you gonna have it after people go, like? Excuse me, ma'am.
Um, officer.
Oh.
Officer, I need help.
Oh, come on.
I need help. We are not going to do this tonight. We've had enough of it, period. And I think we do need to grow up and have a retreat, all of us.
After the week.
Period. Say what you need to say, Mr. Hyatt, if anything, but we are not going to go after our superintendent.
I didn't, you know, the conversation, Madam Chair.
The conversation is, she told you when we had, we had these workshops. And we have all been misquoted in the Sun sometimes. I see the Sun reporter here tonight, but I want him to get it straight. And I don't need all of this about back and forth tonight in the paper. We are, we are, we are not being representative of who elected us, all, all of us, and how we, how, how we are acting with each other. Come on. We just left an F, FSBA meeting and how we are supposed to serve our community. I care about each of you on this board, but as chairman, we will not continue in this manner. If you have something you need to say to the superintendent, say it privately. But not out here, please.
I just like equal. Uh, you know, I wasn't allowed to say what I, to set my thought up. And, uh, so, uh, go ahead, Madam Chair.
Madam, Madam Chair.
I want to recess. I'm sorry.
All right.
Recede. I need to see you.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, we are going to reconvene at this point. And we'll start with Mr. Hyatt. Amendment.
Madam Chair, I request a vote on the amendment. Thank you.
I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
Madam Chair, I request that we vote on my amendment.
And Dr. McNeely, I would just say, I think we've got clarification for the sake of our minutes.
Okay.
That Mr. Hyatt's made an amendment. It's been seconded by Dr. Paulson. I don't know if there's any other discussion of the amendment.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, we are going to do a roll call, starting with Mrs. Surtin. No. Dr. Paulson. Mr. Hyatt.
Yes.
No. So we have a two-two vote. And we will not have the majority. And so now, we will have further discussion on job description. Dr. Paulson.
Yeah, I was, in fact, just three things real quick. I do see some merit in what you've learned. I thought, like, example, the elementary director. I like that job description. And so, I was thinking about an amendment, but I'm not gonna do that now. I also say, one thing about the strategic plan, I just want to clarify some things about the strategic plan and not doing anything since 2012. In fact, since 2013, we had eighteen meetings on a strategic plan and or priorities. Eighteen. You can go on our website, go toward the school board people, and go toward the agendas. And you'll see eighteen of those. This is last year, the only year we did make changes to the strategic plan and updated, making more of ours. You don't have to take my word, you just can read it. Be careful what you write, have to look. So that, I don't think it's quite clear. I like what was read in the paper yesterday. Board members must unite so we can get things done. So I think this is something I'm gonna talk to her, I hope we do unite. Obviously, we're not united right now, but we can work for that. Now, going on to what I will eventually vote against. As of this past year, we have been challenged by a pandemic generating anxiety for all about the safety of our children, our families, our school, and our communities. While there's evidence that all has gone through the org. It's less than scope, not only upends the roles and responsibilities of district staff, but means important budgetary concerns. And I, you know, like, how are we gonna continue this in the future? Also, and more importantly, any reorganization proposal, and I feel very strongly about this, must align to the district strategic plan. Dr. Simon indicated at the last board meeting, she is going to replace, I thought, replace maybe somebody else, replace the district strategic plan. The strategic plan must come first. And then, the organization follows naturally, align to the board's priorities, objectives, and goals. I am unable to see how a total reorganization is implemented without first knowing the goals, objectives, and priorities of the strategic plan. I believe the board's highest priority at this time is to focus on, and actions must be successful, the opening of our schools in a little over six weeks. Our focus should be laser targeted in the next year, on giving our schools the strongest support and resources needed to re-energize our teaching and learning initiatives. I anticipate hearing from Dr. Simon, her timeline for updating the strategic plan, with a strong emphasis, which we haven't done, on parental and community. We haven't had parental and community. Whether you say we have or not, we have. And then, her reorganization thought as aligned to the strategic plan. Until the strategic plan is come, I'm unable to consider supporting the reorganization report. That's my reason. If you disagree or agree with me, that's my reason. That's why we have conversations. I can't, and I do appreciate, I'll admit, I didn't agree with most of you guys. But I appreciate you coming out here and spending your time on something that you believe strongly about. Just, I don't feel that strongly about it as you. I think most businesses, most school systems, or everything, sets the goal then to go. So that's my reason. I've given this a lot of thought. And I know you probably won't be happy with me. My job is, I'm tired, believe it or not, after fifty-seven years of working with students. I do care about children, I do care about my community. Wait a minute. Excuse me, I'm a little. I'll use a, just let me finish talking. Did you hear, did I hear everything?
Please don't repeat it.
You heard it? Well, I thought I spoke clearly, but I guess if I didn't, I'd be glad to get a written copy out. Do I do it?
I thought she said she couldn't hear you.
If that's the case, I'll give you a written copy. Okay? Anyway, that's my reasoning. And I hope someday you can do what you gave us. It's supposed to be long, but maybe it happens. So.
Thank you.
We try to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Simon.
I do just want to clarify, the vote isn't on the organizational chart. The vote is on the job descriptions that help align to the organizational chart.
I'm not, I don't wanna, I wasn't maybe, I like some of them, but I think all it should be, right that we see is the strategic plan, set our goals, come together, start working together with the community, not just part of the initiative. And then, I would vote on job descriptions we have. And I might even then try to take some of them out as amendments. I don't know. I'll see when, whenever we do. Is that clarified?
So the responsibility of the superintendent is to be able to manage the operations of the school district. And the present superintendent is proposing this chart with the job descriptions in order for the superintendent to be able to manage the organization in the way that I do believe is most effective to address the needs that I see, as well as address the needs for ushering in the ESSR money in a responsible way. So I will say, when you look at organizational charts, like we do with all past superintendents, that the superintendent knows the structure that they feel will help them run the organization best. And I'm doing exactly what every predecessor I have had would do. And I do think that we need to go through the strategic plan process. I think that's very important. But there's even job descriptions here that will help facilitate the strategic plan process, specifically the parent and community engagement that you're proposing. And one of the things, and if you've spoken with people who work, especially in this building, who are responsible for many of these initiatives, right now, they are spread very thin. And this proposal is to allow people to focus on a specific area and to do it really well. And what we're having, though, because of the organization of the system at the moment, is people who are not able to put the attention on. Something gives, either something gets ignored, or something gets neglected. And this is what I'm proposing. And I believe that allowing me to move forward with this would allow us to do the best work for our students and for our employees. These are job descriptions that just align with the organizational structure. There are other job descriptions that can be utilized to do this. But it would make more sense, because I did come as an outsider coming in, and I can tell you, there's quite a few folks who have titles that do not align with the job they do. It doesn't, I mean, it really is, on a transparency level, it's incredibly complicated to understand what this individual's responsibilities are based on the job title. And that is not just one individual, it's quite a few. So this is a way to really have logic and flow. There's a method here. And I understand that right now, you are skeptical. But I don't think it's founded.
Well, and then we have to disagree. Because I think any organization, that their goal is then develop a plan. And I've been, I've done this myself, I've developed five strategic plans. And I think that's the way we always do it. Now, I just disagree with what you're saying. I don't think it's fair.
I've reviewed other superintendents and their organizational components, and not once have I seen a strategic plan initiative in order to shape the organizational chart.
We see different. This is my suggestion, and I'm not trying to tell you how to think. I'm just telling you how I think. I think this needs to be done. I think we could just settle down, work hard the next month, and see what we can come up with.
Let Dr. Simon do her job, let her help the children get our board.
Well, let me talk. So anyway, that's Dr. Simon. I disagree.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Mrs. Surtin.
Thank you, Dr. McNeely. Madam Superintendent, I stand fully in support of the proposed job descriptions that will align with the organization chart that you presented with, to us individually in our one-on-one meetings, as well as collectively during your visioning. And there is much work that needs to be done in developing a strategic plan. And I'll say, the reason I say that is, the first, we've done priorities, we haven't done a full plan since I've been on the board. And, well, I'll say since, there hasn't been community engagement. In my first year that we worked on priorities, I left so defeated and disappointed, because one of the priorities that I wanted to be a focus for us as a board was early literacy, grades K through two. And I could not get three votes on that, to make that a priority. And the reason why I wanted early literacy, K through two, to be a focus, is because when we examined our student performance data for prior years, we saw that that had not moved. Grades three, grades five, grades eight, grades ten. And I felt like if we started early, we could really make an impact, and we're not doing remediation later. We really make that a focus. And that priority was not adopted by the board. What we adopted instead was safety and security. And not that I don't think safety and security is important, but we're an educational institution, and I felt that that priority, since we were not updating the entire plan, should have been on there. So we have not engaged in community, our community, for some time now to develop a strategic plan and priorities. And I think, given you the chart and being the superintendent, as you pointed out to us today, and as I said previously, in that operationally, the law gives you the authority to make these types of daily decisions. You came to us in asking us to approve job descriptions and modifications on job descriptions so that they could align with the chart that you presented there. And I stand fully in support of that. And I guess, really, if, you know, you don't have the authority to do that, and you want to kind of start over, do you kind of non-renew everybody and then try to slot people into positions? Or do you, I know you've been doing interviews the past couple of days and all of that for the postings that were there, and you came to us and told us that you were trying to, instead of just doing appointments, you wanted to interview, and you were having panel interviews. And I know that's been very time consuming. So I'm in the interest of respecting your time and the time of your team, the time of the applicants that they put into applying for jobs and all, I will support the initiative. And thank you for the work that's been done.
I think that she, that she.
If you'd let me have my say, and then we're gonna have to do a vote.
Well, if you let me do this one amendment, it talks to what Mrs. Surtin said.
Does the amendment have to do with pushing this vote for tonight? Are you going to vote with us tonight? With the three of us tonight?
Yeah, I'm gonna vote, I just want.
But are you going, if the amendment is going against the plan, I would prefer.
No, it's not going against it, it's just a clarification, and she can agree with me or not.
Well, we were trying to speak privately, if possible, with the superintendent, if you wouldn't mind doing that. Instead of going.
If that's what you, I, I'll do it.
Because if I allow you to say something, then Mrs. Surtin is gonna have to. And that's not what we want to do tonight. All right. Dr. Simon, with all of the meetings individually that you've had with me, as well as your other board members, you have, you have an open door policy. And so, anytime that we have scheduled to see you, we get to see you. Anytime we don't, haven't scheduled a time to see you, we still get to see you. And I think that's marvelous in the amount of time that you have to put in, in order to do your vision that you did a couple of weeks ago. And I know you have a strong team. A lot of people in this building, as well in the whole school system, that they have aligned their work and their responsibilities with you. And to all of the employees, I thank you for that. I know the hours that you put in to do this work. I could start with the two gentlemen and Ms. Johnson, and come on around to the booth, Ms. Wise, Chief Hamilton, everybody sitting up here. You keep late hours. If I could work for you, I would be okay, 'cause I like late hours. If I could work for you, I would be okay, 'cause I like late hours. But, the point of the matter is, with these job descriptions, and you have said it so eloquently tonight, you handle operations, and we handle policy. Because we have talked individually with you, we know why you have done what you've done. To get the amount of money that we're getting, Ms. that, Mr. Rela, have we received it yet? But it's coming, I know. Ninety million dollars. And we don't even know how to act with that kind of money coming into our funding. We have so many things that need to be done, Dr. Simon, and my board members. Five weeks, five, before school reopens. There is no way, if this does not pass this evening, just think about the hole that we will be in. Several of us have already said vacation, and I know I'm taking one. And so therefore, if, and, and I know what Dr. Paulson is dealing with at home, and I would imagine that Mr. Hyatt is going somewhere, and you're going somewhere, and Ms. Green, and Attorney Attorney, and Ms. Jones, and Mr. Rela better be seeking somewhere, and, and, and Mr. Delaney, and Ms. Wise. And I'm saying all of this, because if we're going to pause this tonight, and say, a colleague of mine said, "We really need to have the strategic plan in which to move forward." My goodness, when I just said to a colleague, I'm not calling any names, please hear me out, a colleague, and I have three that's up here, that said, "We may not even be able to meet Monday." And we know what Monday holds. Because if we are not here, none of our employees come July 1 will be on board. We cannot do that to them and their families. I'm here to tell you that this plan has nothing at all to do what we're voting on the organization. We are voting on the description of each one of these jobs. And I don't think that has sunk in clearly enough. If it had, we would not be at this point right now. There is no power play in this, because when I get finished and close the discussion, I'm going to call one by one for the title, the job description, for a vote, one by one. And so we'll probably be here a couple of hours, because there are a lot of one by ones here. But I want you to understand that if we don't make a decision tonight, we need to all repeat, because we all believe it, we all say it, we all think it. Every time we have something to say, we are committed. We are committed to the success, or for the success, of every student. Not west, not east, not south, or north, but every child that is in email, I mean, e-school, drinking mortar, even our homeschool kids get a chance to come and get some participation, whether it's athletics, band, or whatever. If we are that committed, and we believe in what we say, I cannot think, why did we even have to have breaks tonight? We should have been out here earlier, because it's obvious that the team of this school system and the superintendent, they have worked hours on this reorganization plan. I'm surprised, and hopefully that when I call for the vote, it will be unanimous. Because at some point in time, this is not the only night, colleagues, that we will have votes. We will have votes every time we come into this chamber. But if you are thinking that we are going to end this school system like this, we are not getting very far. I hope you heard me when I said, if we don't have a majority vote, come on the 28th at 11:00 a.m., we will have employees all over this district without employment. Think about their insurances, think about everything.
I think I need to do.
We are going, I'm not done.
But I need to respond.
Just a minute, Dr. Paulson. I'd like to finish my statement. I totally, I totally support the plan. Because as I sat in that superintendent's office, and heard the objectives, the goals, and why, and she said it earlier tonight, why can you look into our employee faces who work in, I'm not saying you, Ms. Surtin, Mr. Hyatt, Dr. Paulson, and myself, how can we look in the faces of our employees who work here, knowing that the conglomeration of what they have to deal with, and she's already told you, they are working themselves thin? That's not fair. That's not fair. These job descriptions eliminate, will eliminate that. And it would be wonderful if the people who are behind the red buttons on these cameras could hear us say unanimously that we support these efforts. I'm calling for the vote.
I think I need to have a reply. I hear I have that right.
You have the right, but I'm, but once you say what you have to say.
Okay.
Even though I may want to rebut what you have to say, I will not do that tonight.
All right.
So talk, talk, talk.
All right. We have done this be, we have done this before, and we could do it again, we could extend the contract of these employees for the next month.
No.
Right? And then we could work on it, and do what we have to do. And we could see if we could come together, instead of telling people what they have to do. Now, that's what we've done before. I thought about the employees, just like I thought about the employees when they got letters in the mail. So that's how I think about the employees. So anyway, I, I, where is, where is this letter to talk? I want to see what exactly what was recommended.
Doc, doc.
Can I see it?
See.
That's what, Dr. What did she write? No, that's not what you put up. What was the, um, what was the motion?
I have it right here.
It's on the table. Okay.
The superintendent recommends that the board approve the proposed new and amended job descriptions for the administrative, professional, technical, and education support professionals, as shown and as set forth in the attached documents.
Oh, we got all those at once, and she said, oh, you didn't have to go, you know, you can go through them all, my own things, I think you.
Yes.
You're not going through what she recommended.
I'm going through one by one, because I sit here in this seat, starting now, if there is no more discussion.
Okay, but that's wrong.
Excuse me?
That's wrong.
All right. I'm wrong tonight. Any more discussion, it's okay.
I have a question.
Yes.
Are you saying we're going to vote on each position individually or as a whole?
We are going to vote on every single position.
What is your meaning?
Attorney, Attorney Delaney.
Sure, just to get everybody on the same page, we've got the main motion on the floor that needs to be addressed. If any board member, uh, if that does not pass, uh, if any board member wanted to, um, make amendments, such as voting on them one by one.
Okay, I can, I can give my, I can give my seat chair passes to Vice Chair.
You could, okay.
And I will make the motion.
But right now, we're dealing with the main motion on the floor, so it's not time, it's not time for that. We need to deal with the main motion, see what happens with that. If that's not successful, and you want to pass the gavel to make a different motion, we can take it up at that time.
Thank you. I don't need it, 'cause you'll probably need it.
Okay.
All right, so we have a main motion. We'll start with that. It has been properly moved and seconded. We've had much discussion, and so now we'll have the vote. Mrs. Surtin?
Yes.
Dr. Paulson?
No.
Mr. Hyatt?
No.
And I would definitely say yes. So now that the vote failed, I will now make a motion that we will hear each and every single title and job description for a vote. That is my motion.
Second.
It has been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, Mrs. Surtin?
Hi.
Dr. Paulson?
No.
Mr. Hyatt?
No.
Oh yeah, we should have asked a public input sometime.
I didn't, I didn't get, I didn't.
It's just your discretion, if that one, tonight, it's entirely up to the board.
Are we allowing these comments to the audience?
All right, so yes, we are right now, 'cause I'm trying to get clarification from the, from the attorney.
So, I didn't call for public, for input on the motion that had been made, so before the vote.
All right, what do you want to do at this point?
Is there anyone in the public that would wish to comment on the motion that was just made? Please state your name for the record.
I am Shanae Jackson. For everybody who does not know, all that I can say is, some of y'all on this dais never cease to amaze. I am so tickled at the blatant, the blateness of the sense of entitlement, of talking down to the colleagues, of baiting us out here in the audience. The motion is so basic and so simple. This is elementary. So as you're stating to us to read, perhaps you should become prepared before you tell us to read. What they are asking for is something that's so basic in every single organization, job descriptions. It is blatant, it is clear, who does not care not only about the students in this district, but also about the staff in this district. To have such a dog and pony show, where people's livelihoods are actually hanging in the balance, because you want to exert a level of power, only further proves the point that we've always been making, that it's about y'all. To hear someone say that they want engagement, not just from part of the community, the same person that whenever we called for engagement, always said, "Well, we engage the PTA." The fact to hear someone say that they passed five strategic plans, and if you look at the data, over the time span of all five strategic plans, the doggone disparities got larger and larger and larger, make it make sense. To sit here, to sit here and know what you are doing, the sense of arrogance, the sense of privilege, to sit up here and drown out every other person on the dais, to think you're entitled to speak after every single person in order to have the last word, proves the point that I've been making for the last five years. There are bullies that are on this board that need to be removed. There's a toxic culture at the Alachita County School Board. And just as we got that third black school board member elected, we're gonna ensure that she stays in office, and then in 2022, we're gonna make sure that we take Paulson and Hyatt's seat. I sat before you in 2017 and told you the same thing, and that's what it is. The motion of that part is, how can you say no to going over job descriptions? Mind you, in the public purview, so that we can hear, in order for us all to make it make sense, and understand how this benefits the community at large. That's the question.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I just have a parliamentary question that you could answer, or the, or Mr. Delaney could answer. Why are we having input after the vote has been taken?
This is a new, this is a new, this is a new motion that, Dr. McNeely made a motion to vote on the positions independently.
I, I thought we voted on that, Mr. Delaney, we have not voted on that? I thought it was a two-to-two vote.
I did, it was not my understanding that there was a vote on the handling of the job descriptions individually.
That's great.
I didn't hear, um, we, I didn't call for a vote on the thing, and she, well, I stopped because I said we had not had citizen input.
Okay.
Can I make a motion? I can't say so long.
The, Dr. We're entertaining the motion with, from Dr. McNeely, she passed the gavel.
I mean, I'm not against it, I'm against you doing that.
Thank you, Madam Chair, please.
Please state your name, I'm sorry, Mr. Gomez.
Armando Grunty Gomez. So I'm hearing a word, we, we read was behind Dr. McNeely's, the civility pledge. And we, I mean, reading that, politeness costs so very little. And it's really interesting when the pot should call the kettle black, no pun intended. Because it looks like, you know, we're supposed to be civil back here, but yet, you know, Dr. McNeely was being treated rude by some of your colleagues, or the superintendent was being waved off by one of your colleagues, 'cause they're quite angry. And it's, it's interesting when somebody doesn't have their way, they become petulant. And it's interesting that people can whine and be petulant, and then they want to act like they really care, and want people to come talk to them, or call the secretary. And you want to, but then, Madam Chair says, you want to give your, 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 our ACEA president just left, because the message that you all are sending back there, that women employees matter. But Dr. McNeely, he hear you, but to women that want to get bullied. And it's a shame that our superintendent has to be bullied by some old folks that want to be just mean and nasty.
Sure.
And yes, I'm sorry, I will, I will, it's, it is correct, I was being rude to it, I'm sorry.
It cost some of them.
Well, you should be in a timeout.
So, I asked our citizens if we would, if we would keep our discussion.
Yeah, I wish that they would practice that with y'all, too. It's interesting when somebody else does it, they, they're all of a sudden, they're triggered, they're quite triggered. But you know what, I'm, I have energy for that all day, and I'm gonna match their energy every time they bully you, or bully Dr. McNeely, or bully Dr. Simon. I'm gonna give them that energy, and I'm up for that fight, all day. Do know that. We're coming for you.
Thank you, Mr. Gomez.
We're coming for you, Timpani.
Okay, you know what?
Thank you, thank you.
Sir?
Mrs.
Sir, could, could we, are we gonna allow that threat in this room?
That wasn't a threat.
We're, oh, we're com, we're coming for you. That's not a threat?
Are you being a Karen? Are you being a Karen? Are you threatening?
Mr. Gomez.
Rob, really?
Excuse me.
Mr. Gomez, Mr. Gomez.
The world is just allowed in a civic meeting.
You're not civic, sit down.
Mr. Gomez, please.
Madam Chair, I ask that he be removed.
Mrs. Surtin is the chair.
Madam Chair, I ask that he be removed.
I, Mr. Gomez, would you, would you exit the building, please?
Yeah, we're really worried about bullies.
So, Dr. Sarah Rockwell again.
Sir? Can we follow up on this?
Um, Dr. Sarah Rockwell again, thank you.
Doctor, yes, Rockwell.
Um, so, earlier, one of the board members made a motion to vote on just one job description, and that was not passed. But now the whole lump of them hasn't been passed, and so there's a motion to vote on them individually. And I would suggest that you do that, because maybe when you go back, the, the one job that you wanted voted on will come back again, and you'll have the opportunity to vote on that. And so, you know, we've talked about, I can't name names, but one board member mentioned the importance of community engagement, and that we haven't done that well. And there are multiple job descriptions about community engagement. And another board member mentioned equity, and that we need to have that as a goal, and there is a job description for that. So I think it's really important for you to go through these one by one, if you don't agree with the whole thing, because I think there are parts that you can agree on, and I think it, you, let's, let's stop. This is, this is where. This is, this is hurting my heart to see this dissent and arguing. And when we should all be here for the kids, and I believe that you're all here for the kids, so let, and for our faculty and staff. So let's show them that, and let's go one by one and see where we can come together, please.
What, what, Ms. Jackson?
Excuse me.
No, she was doing a, a. Can I? Do you, would you let me address that?
Would you?
Okay.
I'm not the chair, Mrs. Delany.
Yes, go ahead.
All right. So there was some discussion down there, and I'm just trying to make sure that everybody's on the same page. Filming of public meetings is constitutionally allowed as long as it's done in a non-distracting way. So that's the standard that we need.
And we've been filming all night.
Yes, ma'am. So I was just trying to make sure that everybody understands that's the standard that we're working on. Generally, the cases refer to obstructing the view of other people or making noise in a way that would distract from the business of the board. So that's the standard that we need to be operating on. If someone wishes to film, they can do that as long as it's done in a non-distracting way.
Ma'am, would you state your name for the record? You have three minutes.
My name is Carolyn Weber. And I am, uh, the parent of two school-aged children in Alachua County. I will take my three minutes for every single job description that you guys bring up for a vote, and I appreciate the opportunity to do that. And luckily, my husband made me eat dinner before we left tonight, so I'm good to go until midnight or whenever we stop. I do think it would be a good idea to vote on every single job description and let citizen input for every single job description. And I think every single person in this room should talk about every single job that you'll be voting on tonight. And I really appreciate the opportunity to have this community engagement with the board and superintendent. And again, I, I want everyone to push their own emotions and pride down and think about our children. My children have, uh, the schools on the side of town that I live on have not been A schools for many years. They were F schools. And the reason I became engaged in this process is because I have the means to do what I needed to do for my kids to get them the best possible education. That happened to be private school, which I know you guys don't want. You don't want people to send their kids to private school, but that's what people do in the dock pond and in the neighborhood that I live in. And that's why the schools are unfortunately just forgotten about by many people. And I, I'm sick of it. And I wish I had known when my kids were going into kindergarten what I knew now. I wish I had known that I could engage that time and ask you guys to make the schools better rather than just paying all of my money to a private school. So if it takes all night to get these job descriptions passed, I'll be here all night. I've been waiting for many, many years and spent many thousands of dollars to get my kids a good education that every single child in this county deserves. They should not have to pay. They should get a good public education, and that is what you guys are here to do. It is not to argue with one another. It's not to put yourselves above everyone else and your own pride above the children of this county. The superintendent was one of the most brilliant superintendents. I don't care what kind of experience she has as superintendent. She's one of the most brilliant people I've ever spoken with. If you guys can't see that, that you're blind. I'll stand here tonight and I'll support her, and I'll do it every single meeting for the rest of this year, every meeting, because that's how much I care, and we will make a difference in this community. We're not going to stop. Those other people will stop. They'll stop coming. We will not stop.
Thank you, Ms. Weber.
We've already voted not to do that. I'm not standing there because I didn't prepare to do that. If we're going to vote on something like that, we need to have notification, Mr. Smith.
No, no.
We need to feel the know that's what's going to happen, and that's what we would do. We have already voted no to go into each one.
Well, we didn't, we didn't call for the vote. I mean, we.
I asked for it.
She wasn't the chair though. She passed the gavel.
I passed the gavel. No, we have citizen input. And actually. And we want citizens to speak.
Okay, but I'm not, we're not going to vote on the, I'm not going to vote to vote on each one. So you can talk all you want.
Please state your name now.
My name is Tracy Ambergride. I feel like I'm in my classroom right now, being quiet, waiting for my students to stop talking when they shouldn't be. Doesn't always work there either. I am really disheartened by the display of disrespect, petulance, patronizing behavior. Oh, I should come up with another P and go for the alliteration. This seems to me, political, there you go. This to me has become a political machination, which is absurd and so terribly disappointing. And I say that with all the mom in me I can, that it is disappointing. We're talking about people's jobs, people's ability to provide education and their own livelihood, a way to run the district. This should not be political. This should be clear, cut and dried. Here are the positions. Has it, has it ever happened that a superintendent was held up and prevented from doing her job or his, but hers in this category? That they couldn't do what they were supposed to do because there was infighting and a refusal to vote? That pride is going before the fall? This is what is happening. It doesn't matter what side you are on. We're talking about running the district. It's not rezoning. It's not even the dastardly word equity, which I don't understand why that's a problem. But they're job descriptions that our superintendent, the person who is supposed to create them, has put forth to handle jobs with $90 million coming in, and we're going to lose it? We're going to give up $90 million because we can't agree? That's absurdity. I am not an accountant, but oh, boy, do I know that that is a waste of money and that the people who will pay for it are the children and the teachers who don't come in and the bus drivers who don't come in and the people who serve lunch and cook our food and do all of the other things that we don't always think about within a school district with our custodial staff. They're going to lose their jobs on Monday? I assume that was the Monday reference because I don't work for the public school board anymore, so I don't know. Right? So can, can we, can y'all do your job? Because I know when I don't do my job, I get a little plan. Thankfully, that hasn't happened. But I don't know, is there a citizen plan for school board members who aren't doing their jobs? Do we get to put you on a, what are they called?
Ms. Abergrifon?
A progress monitoring plan?
Would you please wrap your comments up, please?
Oh, I'm sorry. I certainly will. Thank you.
Can I make a motion again? This would be, sir, this would be for the employees who can feed towards. And we've done it. Can I do, can I make a motion? Because this is, you want, you want the employees to be taken care of. If you don't, then go ahead.
You can make a motion, I guess.
Uh, the motion is we extend their contract for the next month. We've done this before for the reasons that they can continue to have their benefit, which they, which they need. And if you say that I don't care about, and if you refuse that, I found, I'm throwing it back in your lap, we can get this and talk this out for a couple. You can't get it talked out now, like, still give them their benefit and still keep them hired because we, we value their employment.
So Dr. Paulson, I'm not to cut you off, but the motion, I mean, what we have before us and what was advertised on the agenda was for us to vote on the job descriptions that were put forward. I, I, um, I'm not.
We voted the other stuff down. What I'm saying now is we made an amendment to go ahead and extend the employees' contracts. This had been done before.
Well, I, we didn't advertise as such as that, and I don't think that's, I think that's an un, I know that if, if that's the case, any, any particular.
Okay, so I would agree that that's not advertised. This is on the agenda for next Monday.
Right.
And that would be the proper time to take up that issue, which is, which is not on the agenda for tonight.
Well, we can do that. That way, we can make sure that they keep their point, and that stops that argument that we aren't going to take care of our employees. And then we can talk about what we're going to talk about. I'm not prepared to go through every job.
We've had our documentation for six, about five or six weeks. I think we've had it, so if we had not. Dr. McNeely?
Do you want to give the employees their, keep their employment or not?
That's next week. That's, that's next week. Well, that's on the agenda for next week. Dr. McNeely?
No, you can't.
Again, that's what I asked for in my.
Okay. Ma'am, state your name for the record.
My name is Wendy Wood. I don't have any biological children who go to schools here. Therefore, every child is my child because that, that's how it should be. You know, we should be looking out for every child. And you know, as I was hearing the latest proposal, have y'all ever heard that term kicking the can down the road or punting the ball just to get some space because you're giving up? We don't need to give up on our children in this county. We need to be running that ball. We need to be passing that ball. We have a superintendent who is a critical thinker and has gone to college and has economics and finance and leadership qualifications. We are not going to have this opportunity around every corner. This is so important. These children, they have one chance, one chance to go to school and get that education. And y'all are up there bickering about, you're obstructing the person that is qualified to help move our children forward by these jobs, you know? These job descriptions, this is basic. Dr. Simon should be able to do her job. And I must commend you, Dr. McNeely, for your patience up there on that board. You are just so patient, and I thank you for that. You're, you're the best chair on this board that I have seen. And I thank you. And I'm speaking to the people here that need a little bit of, of a flip, a little bit of a flip in your thinking for our children. Please flip that. See the humanity of every child. They don't have the tools that you have as an adult. Our school system is there to teach them those tools and to give them that opportunity. Please, please do what is right. Don't be an obstructionist. Let Dr. Simon do her job. Let's, like the pastor said, let's be bright. Let's shine. Let's be a new way of, of doing school where everybody, everybody can excel. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Are there any calls in the booth, Mr. Stanley? Twelve?
All right.
All right.
Madam Chair, could we, could we take five minutes, please?
Um, Mr. Stanley, well, have you sent the first call through yet? Okay. After this call, Mr. Hyatt. Caller? Please state your name. Yes, please state your name, and you have three minutes with the board. Please keep your comments, ma'am, related to the job description.
Okay. My name is, uh, Alyx Anderson. And, uh, I'm the parent of an incoming resident.
Ma'am, your reception isn't clear. Could you hang up and call back, please?
Yeah.
Would you take your?
Somebody needs Alyx.
To our callers that are calling in to the meeting, if you would please mute the device that you're listening on, the TV or your computer device, and on your phone, please don't use the speaker. Speak into the microphone, and I, hopefully, the reception will be better. Uh, we'll go ahead and do a five-minute recess, please.
Thank you.
To three minutes as they relate to the motion that's on the floor.
Ma'am Chair, can you please repeat the motion?
So, the motion that is on the floor, as I recall it, is that we would vote on the positions individually since, um, one by one. And so we're receiving citizen input on that motion.
Thank you, ma'am Chair.
I'm ready. Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board.
Hi, my name is Cherry Lilly.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I, I'm hearing feedback, I'm sorry. Um, I, I hope you can hear me. I'm asking for you to please move forward and vote on the job descriptions independently. Uh, I, I'm pretty sure that I heard at the beginning of this meeting, uh, Mr. Hyatt also brought that up, but maybe I'm mistaken. Um, but I did think that I heard it mentioned that there would be voting on the equity. So I'm asking, just like you would in court mediation, first you start with what you do agree upon. So let's find what we do agree upon and vote on those and move forward. That's, that's all I'm asking.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next caller. Caller, please state your name, you have three minutes with the board.
Um, my name is Tina Days. Um, I called before saying how concerned I was about going back to school and how all of this has impacted my student. I'm even double concerned right now. Because I spent the school board meeting, I had my daughter listening to what was going on, and I can say I am 100% ashamed of some of these school board members and how they're acting. This is not a representative of a leader, and I am just so ashamed. And I also have a clarification, because one of the, uh, school board members said that the reason why there was a no vote because of, uh, wanted to see a strategic plan before, uh, voting on the changes of a job description. But I remember the last school board mem, uh, last school board meeting, this is what was said about the strategic plan. We revisited the strategic plan 18 times in the last six years. It's perfect, and I'm proud of it. It doesn't need to be changed. Now, tonight, it's the same school board member says we need to pause and visit the strategic plan before we can do job description. So I'm confused, which one of the, uh, real school board members stand up? The la, the last meeting who said they didn't need to revisit the strategic plan, that it was perfect? Or it's the next one that says that we need to, uh, pause and visit the strategic plan before we can do job description? I'm very confused. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Days. Next caller, please. Caller, please state your name, you're live with the board for three minutes.
Hi, this is Lisa. I'm calling on topic, the reason why we're eating, having to call back in again. I thought it was zol, and it was going to go to a vote. However, several board members who tried to speak were silent. Silent, bullied, threatened. They have been directly threatened by people in the audience. I'm glad people can now see on video how we've all been threatened. Many of us have to call in because we're scared to come. This is not Elatua County or Gainesville that I grew up in. It's disgusting, and it's embarrassing. I'm very disappointed that several board members sitting up there and their comrades, their supporters are coming to the podium threatening other board members. I'm certain we know who those supporters are. Elatua County now knows who's doing the bullying and the threatening. It's a shame. You have two other people on that board willing to work with you if you will come to them reasonably. But when it didn't seem it was going your way, you felt the need to bully them. If those two were to treat two other people sitting up there the way they have been treated tonight, there would be all hell to pay. So I suggest the person speaking the loudest about civility, show some. Show a middle ground. Because people that have been coming to that podium have made it very clear there is no middle ground as far as they are concerned, that this is a war. And that's sad. They come to you humbly, and when it's not going in their favor, they show their true colors. Let us all be woke. They like to talk about being woke. More and more people are being woke. So don't come up to that podium talking about civility and threatening and bullying and be the exact thing you are claiming to be against. Our kids are watching, the state is watching, and the country is watching. We were raised, when we went to school, and we still do it, we will not judge by the color of your skin, by the content of your character. And that slide is going way down on the character of some of y'all. So I encourage the board to get it together. Quit grandstanding and showboating. Quit exercising the power of control that you have complained about so much, and do not be the very same thing you have been again. I beg you, please, let us respect you again. Many of us had many respects for you.
Caller, thank you for calling in.
Yes, ma'am.
Next caller, please. Thank you. Caller, please state your name, your full name, and you have three minutes with the board.
Okay, thank you. My name is Dr. Sunshine Moss. I hear feedback on my end, but I have everything turned off. Do you guys hear that?
Go ahead, we, you're a little, the reception's not the best, but we're going to try to bear with you.
Okay, thank you. I wanted to speak specifically about the positions, first, the motions, to vote on them individually makes a lot of sense to me. I, to put this squarely on student achievement, in this situation with COVID, the amount of interventions that children are going to need is pretty significant.
Dr. Moss, I'm sorry. You, the, we cannot understand what you're saying. Um, are all of your devices, the volume turned down on them, and you're just speaking directly?
Yes.
Okay.
Everything. I, I'll hang up and try again. Everything. I'll hang up and try again.
Slower. Speak slower.
Thank you.
Did she hang up? Okay. Go ahead and send the next call through, and then we'll... Caller, you're live with the board. Please state your full name, and you have three minutes, please.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
It's gobbled, but we're going to try.
All right. I'm going to move away from the TV even though I have it paused and on mute. Hopefully, that'll help. My name is Shawna Clark, and I am a teacher here in Elachua County. I wanted to call because I wanted to celebrate some of the small things. I made it past the five-year mark. I am not a statistic. I've been in teaching now for five years. I made it past the first statistic. I also wanted to thank the board for giving me the opportunity to teach my children some new words. I wanted to tack on to what Ms. Amberbreed said and use the word poise. Some of the board members have displayed an amazing amount of poise this evening. And I also wanted to add another word, petulance. Some of the board members have been embarrassingly petulant. I've been working since 6:00 AM this morning, and I am sitting in my chair watching the board meeting, going through the scope and sequence for next, for the upcoming school year because I'm changing grades. We have five weeks to get ready. Teachers all over this county are doing the same thing. Staff is, we're all working so hard. We spend tons of our own money. All that is supposed to happen tonight is the superintendent is supposed to be then the means to fill positions, to make the district run better, more smoothly, with more accountability and transparency, and hopefully, please, with more efficiency. Please stop fighting. Stop trying to play this game of one-upmanship. Work together. Pass the job descriptions. They're job descriptions. This will allow her to fill posts, and this will give people the chance to work. Teachers will get the chance to open their classrooms. Students will be able to learn. Make the process better, please. Stop making the process more difficult. And it's embarrassing, I have to say, some of the behavior that my children have witnessed watching these board meetings. It's embarrassing. I'm not pointing anybody out, but I'm pretty sure you know who you are. I would like to thank you all very much for this chance to speak. I also wanted to say one last thing. There are a few people that are furious, and they're very vocal. They will not be able to sustain that. The people that are behind the scenes working hard for equity so that every child gets a good education.
Mrs. Clark, I hate to cut you off, but we have exceeded your time, and we have a lot of participants waiting.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for calling. I see Superintendent Simon has wanted to speak.
So, I know we want public engagement. I also know that we also have some pressing matters that I don't want this meeting to kind of dissolve. And so, I was hoping, would the board be open to me discussing some job descriptions that I think would be very important to get us over this hump, and then we can come back and revisit some of the other job descriptions? Like, can I offer some solutions so perhaps we can get a vote to move forward?
Mr. Hyatt, I saw your hand just now go up.
Yes, ma'am, Madam Chair. I wanted to see if we could, and let me read my ideas. I won't put it in the form of a motion yet. Maybe I should, but I'm going to try to see a way forward here. I would like, at some point very soon, to make a motion to have the following jobs that have added, and this might not be a project because it was voted down before. One, Chief of Equity and Learning. Two, Executive Director of Elementary Curriculum. Three, Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum. Four, Coordinator of Supplemental Educational Interventions. Five, Supervisor of School Volunteers and Partnerships. Six, Manager Data Analytics. And six, Manager Student Achievement. So, if it's appropriate, I would like, and I don't want to step on the superintendent here, because she wants to talk before I make a motion, that's great. But I'll accept the advice of the chair and/or the attorney as to whether this is the right time for me to proceed.
Can we, Dr. Simon would like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
So, if I could use this as a theme, could I offer some others and offer a rationale why? So, I would like to propose to add the Manager of Special Projects, because those are entirely going to be governing the ESSR funding, all of the components associated with ESSR. The Coordinator of Records Management, that's a required job that we don't have that we need to have. So I think it would be nice to be compliant with the law. The Principal of E-School, the proposal of this was to pull the homeschool away, and this was back in the ESSR because we have 1,200 of these Everglades Home School students that were being included in this. In ESSR, we're required to track these students to make sure that they're either in homeschool, they want to stay, or we need to get them back. And so, so my...
Oh, I'm sorry. Do you have to repeat that whole thing? Should I repeat that whole thing?
Yeah, would you start over, please?
Okay. All right. So, I apologize. Okay, so, the special projects, that is, like I said, the Manager of Special Projects, those are entirely focused on making sure, like, all those tables that we had about how the ESSR program are going to be funded, how we're going to follow it, because we have to track everything. And not only do we have to track everything we're doing, we have to provide a rationale why, we have to track the performance of the data, and we have to have continuous progress monitoring. It's not just, in the end of this ESSR grant, we decide to go and look back. We actually have to report this out. It's a huge lift, especially as we're talking 90 million. The Coordinator for Records Management, like I said earlier, that is associated with, it's a required position, and we don't currently have that.
Where is that one?
This is under the Director of Evaluation Accountability and Data Analytics column.
And Dr. Simon, as you speak, would you tell us where each one falls?
Yes. So, under the Director of Evaluation Accountability and Data Analytics, I believe Mr. Hyatt mentioned the Manager of Data Analytics, the Manager of Student Assessment. I feel very strongly, because of the data lift that we already have to do on top of the ESSR data lift, that, I mean, if we were to include Mr. Hyatt's, then that would be the entire column. If I were to prioritize this based on how I see it, I would see it as the Manager of Special Projects, the Coordinator of Records Management, and the Director of Evaluation Accountability and Data Analytics. One, because I do believe it needs to have some level of supervision in a specific area. And this position technically exists, it's a minor title change. I totally agree and appreciate that the Chief of Teaching and Learning is being brought to the table. I totally agree and appreciate the Executive Director of Elementary and Secondary, and the Director of Curriculum. I think that should be a separate component because we currently have an Executive Director of Curriculum. It actually would just be a shift down. I do think the Principal of E-School, and I think this is where we realized I didn't have my mic on, right now, that individual is also in charge of our homeschool students. And our homeschool students went from 200 to 1,200. And if the goal is to get these students back in, again, that is a huge shift. I think we need to have a Director of School Choice because that is what that person can focus on, as well as separating the grants from, or, sorry, separating grants and charter schools, because as we've seen, that's another component. It's a big job. The Director of College and Career Pathways, this is, again, it's separating, right now, that is a, it's a Director Two, which is aligned with the Lofton Principal. The feedback that I received with... It is the same job. So, a Director Two is the Director of CTE and the Principal of Lofton. So, just separating that. Coordinator of Supplemental Educational Interventions, I believe Mr. Hyatt proposed that. I appreciate that. The Chief of Equity Inclusion and Community Engagement, Mr. Hyatt suggested that. I appreciate that. Actually, the Supervisor One of School Volunteers and Partnerships, this position does technically exist, but this is a coordinator. So, if I need to, like, move us forward on things, I would suggest the Coordinator of Community Engagement and the Coordinator of Online Presence, because those are two positions I do not have. I would also say the Chief of Finance, and that's only because I have all these chiefs, and it's an Assistant Superintendent. So, it's really, like, it's a title change, so he matches with the other ones. The Executive Director of Human Resources, we currently have a Director of Human Resources, and the feedback we received when we went through our first batch of interviews is that...
Where are you?
Sorry. I'm under the Chief of Operations. Again, that's a title change, just like the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and the Assistant Superintendent of Operations. Chief of Operations is really, like, we're going to use a different title. It's nothing different. So, underneath that, in the blue on the right, the Executive Director of Human Resources, that is to move it up from Director in order to increase the experience of the individuals that we believe we need in order to run a strong HR department, which there's so much going on in there. If those could be proposed and voted for, I think that would be...
Madam Chair, I'd be happy to reply if you...
Go ahead, Mr. Hyatt.
Thank you. You know, when I spoke earlier, and I really wasn't, for whatever reason, allowed to say everything I planned to say, and I do respect the ruling of a chair. I've been a chair. I understand it's not an easy job. But when I said, "Press Pause," I didn't mean, I didn't mean anything different, and I'm pretty sure if Dr. Simon didn't use those exact words, that was pretty much an impression that we got on the last workshop. So, if it's not, if it's a paraphrase, apologize. I'll apologize for the paraphrase. Or apologize for reading or listening to something in the newspaper. But, again, when Dr. Simon indicated that we're not going to do the, and she told me, oh, that's up to the board to do that now. But when we said we're not going to rezone, and we've talked about that forever, I never said or thought that she meant we weren't going to do it. I was using the term "press pause." And so, and that doesn't mean that there is a list of these jobs that would never come to fruition. It means it was 144 pages, and, you know, we've heard a lot about employees. Well, I mentioned employees about two and a half hours ago. And I said, "We have, right now, administrators that don't know they'll have a job in nine days." So, all of this saying, and so maybe that should be the higher priority. Now, so, I'm, I thought, for me, since we really have put it on the back burner as far as anything happening, I wanted to make sure that Equity was right in the center, and have that get, and this would obviously be Dr. Simon's choice, but I wanted that position. It was voted down, and that's okay. So, what I'm doing now is saying, and so reaching out and seeing if we could add some, and get these positions, and if, and then, like we do with every other position, and we start talking about what other superintendents did. Other superintendents didn't have this number of jobs at one time. Also...
Mr. Hyatt, Mr. Hyatt, I don't want to cut you off, but I don't, I want us to, like, if we could really try to come to some agreement about what we would do, instead of, like, going back into the past.
Okay.
Could we do that, if we, just for the sake of time?
Madam Chair, point well taken. Thank you. I appreciate that. So, I will, and I really do, seriously, I appreciate it. And so, I would like to make, I'm going to make a motion this time, and...
And before you make your motion, there's one position that I do think that needs to be included in this that wasn't. I will, yeah, okay, just a second. Okay. It's Chief of Security, Safety and Security, because we got to have that, because that's the state law. So, and I know that's just a title change, or we're...
Actually, that one, we were going to title change it, and then because of the feedback from the...
That's right.
We pulled it back. Now, I will say the one underneath it, Manager of Security and School Safety, that was, I mean, that was a situation where we do have an employee, and she's doing a considerable amount of work, and so this position was to reflect the work that she currently is doing. There's two of those, but if the board needs me to wait on those and bring those later, I can do that.
Okay. Let me get Dr. McNeely, because she's been trying to get my attention.
No, I was just going to say, I like the colleague's compromise, but inasmuch, I don't know how often he's spoken with the superintendent, but some of the highlights that he has called out, they are positions that need to be tied in to that in order for it to work. You can't just pick, like, you know, I don't want to say a domino, but pick these that you really feel strongly about, and you don't have some of the other positions that need, once again, you're selecting a position and a person that will be so thin because you don't have the workings with them. I don't know how you're going to do that, Mr. Hyatt. And you don't, we don't have the time...
Right.
...to come back. At least, I've heard from my colleague to my left, says he can't have all these meetings. So, how are you going to put all of this off?
Well, I will say that, you know, I've talked, people have called me that have never called me, and these are people that work for the Detro. And they're very concerned... And these, these are people that work for the district, and they're very concerned. And, and, and they're, they also feel very confident that we can handle as a district, that we can handle this.
Attorney Delaney would like this piece, asking me if he wanted to do with something, oh, okay.
So, so, um, and, and, and I'm, so, so when we, I'm just saying, the, the perception that, that this is something that is universally supported by employees is just not accurate. And, and of course, there are many that are strong supporters. So, okay, so, uh, Madam Chair, if you'll let me know if it's appropriate to make a motion.
Okay, I have a few other things before you do that. Attorney Delaney wanted to address your comment or your question, Dr. McNeely.
Yes, ma'am, that's all right. Dr. McNeely, what I'm understanding, the motion is kind of being cobbled together between the superintendent and Mr. Hyatt with input from all the other Board members, is that this is a, perhaps a down payment, or at least this is the mission critical positions that the superintendent is saying she needs to get her program going this summer.
I get that, but you don't have Attorney Delaney. You have not been a principal-
No, ma'am.
And I don't think anybody else up here, other than Mrs. Jones. I know what it takes. And to say that you're gonna get one person, and I'm all for going with Mr. Hyatt's recommendation and his motion, and I'm sure it will pass. But he can't be the only one to have choices here. And Dr. Paulson has some choices that he would like to say. But I think in all fairness, as a Board, we each, if we think very strongly about the position, we need to have the same consideration.
I am willing to listen to your suggestions as well. If you have some you'd like to suggest, I am willing, and Dr. Simon has her hand up, and-
Can, can I just make one point of clarification as we go through? The, the statement about concerns about administrators not having a job July one, that is not going to happen. And, and I, I think it's really important that that's clear, because I do know that there are people who are watching and perhaps are not aware of how this works. My, my goal is to get this moving forward, to make sure that, that the placements exist and so forth. Now- I believe I've shared this the last meeting, and I stand by it again. I'm, when I say it on the dais, I mean it.
That's why, I, I'm appreciative, I think you're making an effort to accomplish.
Yes, I am trying.
Yeah. After we all got to do that now, well, if we're meant to go way back to where we were. And then if we could start trusting each other, that would be a big start, you know? I feel like you're making a movement, like this is very good. I like it.
I would like us all to get along, so if we could, uh- I would say with four members of the Board, there is a, a definite need to cut, to find compromise and come together. We have work to do, whether, you know, we gotta get things done.
Dr. McNeely, did, um, okay, so do you want to craft, you want to share with the positions that you'd like to add to this compromise?
I'd like to hear from the gentleman on the dais. When do you think that you would wanna come back? And then that will clear me up with sitting here, taking time to go through each one of these. Are we gonna do it next week in a special meeting? We can get it noticed.
Dr. Paulson, would you come up to the mic so we can hear you?
Okay, sorry. I like the idea that we guarantee that our candidates will have a job. And we, we talked about it for an hour, but it's good. So, and when, if we come back in a couple weeks, and you have the rest of the thing, and you get a little more flame, and we can see the change?
Well, of course, but if I guarantee all of our employees have a job, will you just do all the job descriptions? I mean, if that was the worry beforehand, I'm sorry that that came across, because I, the administrative decisions that were previously made, that was the end of it, and, and I shared that. These job descriptions are moving forward. And, but I will say, what we've talked about, this, this attempt, I mean, this could get us started. Although I would love the whole bundle. It is new, but I think we're gonna have to do it more often. I can't vote. Well, you can't talk to each other, other than here. Oh, you can, you are always welcome to come talk to me. And call me, and I'm happy to talk to you. I send you text messages.
And I, I need to ask Dr. Paulson, not press him on a timeframe, but I want to remind you that if she doesn't have these positions before the tenth of August, do you know what our system is gonna look like? And then you, two weeks, and then you're gonna hold on all of this? Well, then, it's no- We, we, Dr. Paulson, and, and, and Mr. Hyatt, and Mr. Hyatt. Why it's a necessity, why it's a necessity, you cannot afford to wait two weeks. How in the world are you all thinking? All of these people who are listed, there are no people listed here, but all of these positions that are here, they have to work and be in place and have some type of organization. You can't just bring somebody in, in two weeks and say, "Go, go on."
Honestly, I think a week or two is incredibly problematic. In, here, and hear me out. We have six weeks until the fall semester starts. And, and we have, I mean, I have interviewed, I believe, twenty people in the last three days. So there's, there's considerable amount of people who are waiting. I, I think the proposal that Mr. Hyatt and I have been trying, this could get us over the hump, and then maybe we revisit at the end of July.
End of July, or the first part of, first part of July?
I'm, well, I'm looking for something, because right now- July fifteenth's my birthday. But I would like to do some things a little sooner than that, like now. How about the, the middle ground, and then the fifteenth, we visit the, the rest of them? Are you not gonna be here for my birthday?
No, I'm seeing my granddaughter's birthday on display, so, no.
So we have one meeting in July, correct?
Why can't it be next week? What's the matter?
So Mr. Relo reminds us that we have TRIM meetings coming up in July. I don't have all those dates in front of me, but I think there are gonna be opportunities for us to be back together, and that could be on the agenda in addition to a TRIM vote.
Can, can I ask you, this is a, a policy question, Mr. Delaney. So we've gone through the first reading, we've had a public hearing, we've gone through the second reading. This would be when the vote is. If some of these are delayed, does this whole thing have to start over again with the first reading? Or they can just be like a, we can bring it back?
We, we can do it piece by piece.
Okay.
Because the job descriptions, there, there has been enough time for the public to have input.
So can we, Mr. Hyatt's proposals and my proposals, can we consolidate those? Can we get this-
I'd like to give Dr. McNeely an opportunity, because she had some as well, and Ms. Green, or, well, I don't know, I mean, Dr. McNeely, did you have some, or were you all or nothing?
I'm, I'm gonna compromise and be quiet. I'm, I'm just so hurt, because I know what it takes.
I know, I know.
And, and it doesn't seem like it's going in anybody's brain. But I tell you what's needed, I'll go back. The positions in green, and some in, um, purple, in lavender. And definitely with the hiring of new people in this district, in, under the blue.
I'm, I'm with you in that I, I would like the whole plan to go forward, because the information has been out there. But I am trying to, to come to a meeting of the minds, so that we can move forward and not, but, yes, yes, Dr. Simon.
The only problem is, Madam Chair, is that I don't mind compromising with this Board. The problem is, when we come back, if we are at this same stagnant place, then I'm gonna be really, really disappointed in compromising tonight, and we can't move forward with the rest of the plan. And there is no guarantee. It's obvious.
There is no guarantee. You're right, Dr. McNeely.
And that's so unfair.
And we, well, we, we don't have to compromise.
We want to, we would like to compromise with you, Mr. Hyatt. But we, we would like to compromise with you, Dr. Paulson. But the point is, don't have us to come back, thinking that, well, on the twenty-ninth, we can finish this out. And, and I'm, I'm watching your head movement right there. I, I don't feel comfortable.
Would we, would we mind if Ms. Green read the jobs, so we're all just clear, and we can check? Because I feel like I'm doing this on the fly. I would appreciate it.
I'm, I'm marking as well. Go, Ms. Green, go ahead, please read those, the positions on the list that you have.
Tell us what page, please.
Or start from, start from the left, if you could.
And give us a page number.
No, Dr. McNeely, we use this right here. I think this is easier.
Is she's gonna read?
Oh, okay, okay. Can you speak in the mic, Ms. Green?
So for Mr. Hyatt, I have Chief of Equity, Executive Director of Curriculum Elementary, Executive Director of Curriculum for Secondary, Director of Student Assessment. Manager of Student Assessment, I just have student assessment down. I have the position for School Volunteers, and then the Manager of Data Analytics, and the Manager of Student Achievement.
Did you have Coordinator of Supplemental Educational Interventions?
No, I did not have that one. I have that one down here for Dr. Simon.
What color is that?
Student Achievement.
Special Projects.
I, I had a total of seven.
Seven, yes. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, yes. Equity, the two curriculums, student assessment, school volunteers, data analytics, and student achievement. Those are the seven that Mr. Hyatt read.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Director of Professional Development, Supervisor Two of Budget.
Hold on, hold on, wait, wait, Dr. McNeely. Wait a minute, you're going too fast. So you said Director of PD, what's the next one?
I lost it. Director of, um, Community and, I'm sorry, Communication and Community Initiatives?
That position already exists.
It already exists. So the ones with the little dots already exist? With the little stickers?
No, with the no dot, that doesn't exist.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So Greens, new positions? And Blue is existing? Or amended, yeah, slightly amended.
Green is what you need.
Green dots, yes, ma'am.
Green, but some of, I mean, the Blues, so like HR Executive Director, it is a Director. So we did, it has a blue dot, because it's an existing position, but it's amended.
So all of the blue dots are existing positions?
With some minor changes. Like, so Chief of Operations is entirely a title change.
Okay.
But Executive Director of HR is actually a change from Director up to Executive Director.
Okay.
No, no, Dr. McNeely's not done yet.
So the Coordinator for Benefits, that has no, that has nothing there, and we all need that individual.
So, so, I mean, so the problem, the complication of this, using this chart, is that this is all of our administrators, and any additional change to a job description that is on here. So it's, it's not only administrators, because we do have individuals that we either added or modified that aren't administrators, but like the, the Coordinator for Benefits, that job exists, we have a person.
And we'll talk later, but Director of Finance with ninety million dollars, you need almost everybody up under there, who needs to have a say on that money.
You mean the Supervisor to a Budget?
No, the, I thought, is it Director of?
It's, the Chief of Finance, so that's just a title change. That's Alex.
I know, we got him, but I'm talking about the Director now.
To the left. Oh, we have a Director of Finance.
Oh, you have one?
Yes.
Okay, then I'll be glad. I don't know, I don't know the people. I don't, I have no idea.
Okay, and then the suggestions from me.
So I, I have Manager of Special Projects, Coordinator of Records Management, the Principal of E-School and the School Choice, and then Director of College and Career Pathways, Coordinator of Supplemental Ed Interventions, is that the position that was titled? Coordinator of Community Engagement, Coordinator of Online Presence, and you said Chief of Finance, and the Executive Director of Human Resources.
You mentioned Chief of Teaching and Learning, but I didn't know.
I thought, I mean, thought Mr. Hyatt mentioned Chief, Chief of Teaching and Learning. I had that on R by him.
I didn't have that for Hyatt.
Actually, I didn't, didn't have that, because I, I think we already have that position under another title. But, uh, I, oh, we got, okay.
It would be an Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning. It, it would be just like the, the Chief of Finance, Assistant Superintendent. I think the only other thing I had was a slight title change to the Director of Evaluation and Accountability and Data Analytics. And I was hoping to add the Director of Curriculum. Um, and I was hoping to add the Director of Curriculum.
Madam Chair, if I, if I could make a suggestion, I don't want to step on anybody. You know, we're, we're sort of, at this point, um, just sort of adding and adding and, and, uh, and every single person, uh, has just as valid or more valid choices than I do. I'm, I'm not claiming mine are any way better. What, what I would like to do, I'm gonna make a suggestion, I'm not gonna make a motion, uh, maybe I'll make one, but I'm not planning to right now, is, um, you know, I, again, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna reiterate and I'm certain you interrupt me if I go too long, okay? But, but, seriously, but, but I, I am, uh, you know, I, I think, I was trying to push it forward a little bit and, and I'm not willing at this point to go with the whole plan. So, uh, what I would suggest is that if, if we could possibly adjourn the meeting and, uh, continue the meeting one week from today and give each of us a chance to talk individually with Dr. Simon and, and see, uh, if, if, if there's something we can forge out. Uh, and, uh, if, if we wanna stay here for one tonight, that's fine, I'm, I'm gonna be here. Not gonna bother me.
Let's stay, let's stay, let's stay.
Can I, can I just offer, and, and I, I understand and I appreciate what you're saying. Can I ask the board to let me do the operating of the district? And so, the ones that I think I need for compromise, could I start there? So I could, could, since I know how this is operating?
I'm gonna listen, I'm listening.
Would, would you be okay? So the, the ones I, I got another one I can go through. So, the ones that I believe that I need are the Manager of Special Projects, the Director of-
Where is that?
Okay, so-
To the left.
On far left, I'm gonna work left to right. So the, the first column, I'm not taking anything there, although, well, we can talk about it later. Second column, the direct, I would like that entire column. Third column, I would like the Executive Director of Elementary Curriculum. I would like the Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum. Underneath that, I would like the Principal of E-School, the Director of College and Career Pathways. One more column over, I would like the Director of Curriculum. I appreciate Mr. Hyatt's suggestion, I also would prefer to have the Coordinator of Supplemental Educational Interventions. Like the Chief of Teaching and Learning, the Director of School Choice. I would like the Chief of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. Then underneath, the Director for Communications. I would like the Coordinator of Community Engagement and Coordinator of Online Presence. I would like just the title change of Chief of Finance. I would like the Executive Director of HR. I would like the Director of Professional Development, I did miss that in the first round, I apologize for that. And I would like the name change for Chief of Operations. And if this could get me over the fiscal year hump and then the next meeting where we have with Mr. Rela, I would like to bring back the remaining job descriptions.
Okay.
I am happy to meet with you all.
Dr. Simon, I, I just wanna make sure I got this right. I'd, I'd like you to, if, if you wouldn't mind going over those again.
One more time?
Really appreciate it.
Okay, so, second column from the left is the Director of Evaluation, Accountability, and Data Analytics. I would like that entire column. So that's the data, uh, Manager of Data Analytics, Manager of Special Projects, Manager of Student Assessment, and the Coordinator of Records Management. The third column, I'd like the Executive Director of Elementary Curriculum. To the right, I would like the Executive Director of Secondary Curriculum, the Principal of E-School, and the Director of College and Career Pathways. One more over to the right, I would like the Director of Curriculum and the Coordinator of Secondary Educational Interventions. I would like the Director of School Choice. And the Chief of Teaching and Learning is just a title change. I'm now on the purple, like the lavender guys. The Chief of Equity, Inclusion, and Community Engagement. And then underneath the Director of Communications, I would like to have the Coordinator of Community Engagement and the Coordinator of Online Presence. I am requesting a title change for the Chief of Finance. I would also like a title change for the Chief of Operations. I'd like the Executive Director of HR, which goes from a Director up to an H, a Director up to an Executive Director. There is the Professional Development Director, um, that is a Supervisor Two, and I would like that to be a Director. And that's it.
You missed two that Mr. Hyatt had said, I thought, under the paint.
But I think she was offering a list that she wanted to have and since the-
Oh, okay, but, so you, you didn't take in consideration what he-
Well, I mean, let me, can you tell me which are the two that I missed?
I thought you missed the Elementary Principal of, well-known, the Secondary and Elementary?
No, the Executive Directors, I, I definitely, those are important.
Yeah, she has all of those, the Executive Director of Elementary, Secondary, and Director of Curriculum. So that was offered after, um, instead of in lieu of adjourning and coming back. So, do we have, Ms. Green, do you have the list from Dr. Simon?
Yes, except for the chart, that whole column that she said.
Yes.
Still don't think I know how to-
Okay.
So, when we do the minutes, because it's underneath the, the Director of Data and Analytics, we will make sure that it all aligns, but, I mean, that's the, the beauty of recording these things.
All right, so, um, if I could get a motion from, for, for those that we can vote on? Those suggestions of things, the positions that Dr. Simon says that she needs to go for?
Madam Chair, I move.
So move. Can I get a second, please? Is there a second? Okay, so we'll now vote, uh, we'll start with Mr. Hyatt.
No.
Dr. McNeely?
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion passes through one. Okay, thank you. Um, and, and in lieu of the time, Dr. Simon, you have anything else you'd like to add?
I wanna thank you, I appreciate this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh.
All right, um, anything else? That is it, um, on our, we've had much discussion tonight on this.
You have people that you never said anything else to.
Oh, wow.
What, what I would say on that is that, um, sunshine law requires us to give a reasonable opportunity for public comment. Um, certainly, this is our third meeting where this has been discussed and we had lots of opportunity for public comment tonight, so I think that we're in compliance with the law on that.
What our, our citizens, we, we have heard from our citizens, is there anyone who just needs to speak now? We will entertain that. If not, we will see you next week.
See you, we'll see you on Monday, Monday on, at 11 o'clock.
Wait, Mr. Delaney, don't you have an outstanding motion that you never voted on?
That's right.
I just don't want-
And we can, it can die. But you, remember, I made the motion, that's why Mrs. Surtin has the gavel.
I am so sorry, Dr. McNeely, I forgot about that motion there. So you withdraw that motion?
Yes.
Okay, so we'll accept that. Our next meeting is a special meeting that's Monday, June 28th at 11 a.m. And if there is no other business, can I get a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Second.
Okay, we're adjourned.